Broadcast has been set.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Operations Budget Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Sheila Adam Stafford. I'm the Chair of this committee and District Four Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. We'll now have introductions of the committee members, starting with board members, administrative administration, board staff, and all other guests. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening there, one. Dr. Kenneth Harris, District Seven Representative and Vice Chair of OBFA.
Good afternoon, Judy Mickens Murray, Member of OBFA.
Hi, good afternoon, Jocelyn Rout, Member of OBFA.
Hee Pal.
Good afternoon, Lisa Howell, Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Shirazka Coleman, Chief Operating Officer.
Good afternoon, Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services.
Good afternoon, Michelle Winston, Director of Internal Audit.
Good evening, Pearl Harmon, Director of Human Resources, Operations and Staffing.
Good evening, Kiba Baldwin, Director of Transportation.
Good evening, Curtis Eugene, Senior HR Partner, Human Resources.
Good evening, Lisa Morales, Senior Advisor to the Superintendent.
And Ace Ellis, Administrative Secretary, Board Office.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. May you please call a roll?
Yes, Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Dr. Harris.
Present.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Present.
Mrs. Rout.
Present.
Ms. Rivera Forbes. We have a call.
May I have a motion? Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt to adopt the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
I moved to adopt the twenty twenty-three November four fifteenth agenda meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three moving meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion passes and the agenda is adopted. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the October twenty-sixth meeting minutes? That was the date, right?
Second, second.
Okay, it's that's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes and the minutes are approved. So in terms of public comment for this evening, we have no registered public comments this evening. In regards to labor partners, we have no public comment from our labor partners. So under item three point one, I will now yield the floor to our Director of Transportation, Mr. Kiba Baldwin, to provide us with updates on transportation, specifically hiring and contract update.
Madam Chair, I see the hand of Ms. Denise.
The meeting minutes are supposed to be dated the twenty-fifth, just that, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll now yield to Mr. Baldwin.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We wanted to share some updates to all of our dealing with our transportation department. And just need to know if I need to share my screen or we have the presentation available?
Please.
I can share.
Your screen, please.
All right, good deal. Let's see. All right. Can everyone see that? Awesome, all right. So thank you, board members, for the opportunity to update you. Our conversation will focus on the alternative transportation updates involving contractor use, vehicle procurement, and the use of our non-CDL drivers. In addition, we will update you on the local twenty-two fifty union collaborations and provide a human resource update. As we've begun to implement our alternative transportation options, let me give you an overview of how the contractors are being utilized. The MVP office will utilize the ever-driven contractors to provide service if students cannot be routed within twenty-four hours. This would also include any out-of-boundary moves as well. This initiative will allow immediate assistance for students newly enrolled in the MVP office. This is a temporary intervention until a student is routed. In most cases, ever-driven will provide service up to ten days. In this period, transportation services will work to route students to a minivan or a school bus. The MVP office has approximately four thousand, excuse me, four hundred and eighty thousand in grant funds allocated to support student transportation. Approximately one hundred thousand of these funds have been allocated to contractor transportation costs. Approximately three hundred and eighty thousand has been allocated to purchasing additional minivans to be driven by PGCPs non-CDL drivers. This will be the long-range tool in providing the necessary services for students. Moving to the non-CDL drivers, disposition will drive district rented and owned vehicles and employees. It's designed to ease the driver shortage by giving the transportation department additional tools to meet student needs. It increases the potential members to the local twenty-two fifty union. It creates career advancement opportunities for our transportation staff. And of course, it will be used as a recruitment tool for future potential CDL drivers. At this point in time, I'd like to pass the torch over to Mr. Morales.
Thank you, Director Baldwin. Very quickly, just wanted to speak on this one aspect of it, which is our collaboration with our labor partners. So just to outline what we have done, PGCPs leadership and staff labor partners have received updates regarding the rollout. We've done this through the monthly negotiated agreement labor management meetings. This started, I know this was put at a halt in January, but when we started moving again, this resumed in September. We met on two occasions outside of these monthly labor meetings to speak specifically with local twenty-two fifty leadership to further outline what was being done. And we engaged in meaningful discussion around the priorities and why this was important for us to move with haste. And then based on the feedback that we received in these conversations, it was very clear that given the pace, we needed to establish some type of committee to make sure that the updates are ongoing and they are proactively involved in these conversations. So we are moving forward with that. Thank you, Director Baldwin.
So good evening. So prior to Curtis Eugene providing the updates surrounding our recruitment practices, I wanted to just provide an update. Since our last meeting time, we have had an opportunity to meet with Informative, the team that is here during the audit on transportation. Mr. Eugene and I met with them yesterday afternoon, and we were able to share with them our process and even process maps of what our current practice is. So we will be providing the updated documents that they have requested so that they continue, they can continue the review. Curtis?
Thank you, Dr. Harmon. And definitely, that was a very productive meeting, and we look forward to the partnership. In terms of just the updates as it relates to recruitment, this is a continuation of what was presented during the last meeting. Since then, we've now participated in twenty-one events through a variety of different mediums. Our next recruiting events, one was today where we had at the Tanglewood Administration Building. And the next event we're participating in is in our partnership with Employee Prince George's at the Veterans Job and Resource Fair at Palmer Park Community Center. That's an example of the different events that we're participating in, in working within the community. So those are the events that we have scheduled for the month of November. And then we have additional events that are scheduled for December. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we typically do one in-person event, and then we do a virtual event. So we at least have a minimum of two recruitment events every month. Keep it, if we can go to the next slide, please. So that slide, this slide is just a summary. What has been asked before, we continue to provide that is just a summary of the different individual recruitment events that we've held and what the outcome has been based on individuals that have attended and interviewed. As you can see of the individuals, we've extended a total of two hundred and eighty-six job offers to individuals. Enough that eighty-one percent of those individuals have accepted the offer. And it's just a matter of us progressing forward in the onboarding process or the hiring process as it relates to them. The next slide, I'll be able to provide a little bit more details. For our non-CDL driver positions, the newly established positions, we held interviews on the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. Of those thirty-nine candidates were scheduled and twenty-two actually attended and were interviewed, and resulting from that were seventeen offers. We've hired four of those individuals to date, and they're currently active and working right now. Eleven have declined and two are pending a response. Based on the fact that we were budgeted for twenty-five positions, we've actually reposted the position and it was closed, it had a closing date of yesterday. When this slide was created, it was as of Monday, and at that time, we had forty-seven applicants that had applied to the position, and we're in the process of scheduling interviews for the non, the additional non-CDL driver positions. Just to expand on what I stated earlier, we, to date, we've offered two hundred and eighty-six offers. A hundred and eight of them have accepted. Ninety-two have declined, were non-responsive or unable to be hired for curma or other restrictions. We have thirty-six bus driver trainees that have been hired or promoted to a bus driver position. And then we also had a hundred and four training prospects, individuals that do not have their CDL, but that we were scheduling for the paid CDL prep class. Of that, sixty-five individuals have attended. Beginning November first, all our CDL prep class trainees were afforded the opportunity to be hired and work as a substitute bus attendant while obtaining their required CDL learners. It was one of the things we identified was an opportunity to keep individuals close to us as they were getting their CDL learners. That way, they could learn, they could provide a service for us as a substitute attendant, but also they could learn about the nuances associated with working in transportation and also have additional support from the current existing staff with both the bus drivers and the attendants as they, to hopefully increase their success levels in obtaining their CDL learners. We, right now, we have thirty-one individuals within our bus driver training class, and upon their completion, and it's typically around a six-week timeframe, those individuals will transition into a permanent bus driver position. So those are our current updates.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this update. Colleagues, I'm going to ask if you have questions to limit your questions to two, two and a half minutes, and this goes for, you know, in the administration and giving your responses to those questions, so we can move this along. But I'm happy and encouraged to see the progress that we're making, particularly with hiring. So colleagues, if you have a question, please raise your hand. I'll start with board member, I'll start with Chair Mickens Murray, and then board member Rout, and then I'll ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I may have misunderstood. I think it was Mr. Baldwin. Did you say that the minivans take the students to a bus, or did I misunderstand that?
Yes, ma'am. The minivans are used in transporting the students to school. We picked them up.
To the school. Okay, thank you. So I misheard that. All right. And then finally, and I really appreciate this update. Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that you are continuing to seek to hire bus drivers. So, but my question is around pay. We've had bus drivers to come to the board twice now to talk about not getting pay on time or something. Is anyone here can address that, or should we send that question to somebody else?
No, I will address it. As we continue to get better, there are opportunities where a driver's route has changed, which means their hours have changed. And so somewhere in this process, we are trying to figure out where that inconsistency lies from where we have made a change in their schedule to their pay. And so we're actively working with our payroll partners, our HR partners, to kind of reconcile that, and so we can kind of resolve it for everyone.
Okay, well, I'd appreciate if our next OBFA meeting, if you could give us an update on that process so that we can help defend you, because we need to understand what the problem is, and everybody wants to be paid on time.
Yes.
Oh, I'm done.
Hey, thank you very much, Board Member Rout.
Hi, thank you so much for this very robust update. I do feel like we're moving in the right direction to improve our transportation system. So I thoroughly appreciate the district and all of the updates and the attempts. My question is related to the minivans and the shortage. Are there any attempts that now that we have stood up this minivan program, we have the skeleton for the program, are we starting to look at some of the routes that we, let's say, for instance, we have the capacity to to go to the routes, the two hundred and twenty-eight routes that are short? Are we looking to also look at those subsections of routes to see if any of those students who need transportation fall within the MVP program? Thank you.
So that is on our radar. Right now, the focus has been servicing our MVP population. As we build our fleet of non-CDL drivers with those minivans, if we are fulfilling the MVP and we have an access of the minivan drivers, then obviously, we will look at some of our regular, our program routes where we can kind of add or help our yellow bus drivers transport students to school. But right now, that primary focus is on our MVP, and as we build that, our fleet, we can focus on those other areas.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
No, go ahead, please.
I would like to know what the district is doing to publicize and announce these new improvements to our transportation system. I think transparency and giving updates, I think this meeting is a first step, but I would like to know more of how we will be communicating these improvements to the public, to include the youth and families and our teachers and staff. Thank you.
Right. Well, that's something that we can definitely bring in our communication team and work on a strategy to communicate it to all stakeholders. If it involves social media or passing information through our schools, that's something definitely we could talk with our communication team to help assist with getting this message out.
Thank you so much.
Nothing. Thank you. Nothing more.
Okay, Board Member Harris.
Yeah, thank you for the time and thank you for the presentation tonight. One question for you, Mr. Baldwin and Dr. Coleman. So we assume that the transportation issue isn't something that's going to be solved immediately, and one of the mitigations for that has been the purchasing of the vans. Remind me again, how many vans we purchased?
Sixteen vans.
Sixteen. And so with the thought that we will, is the tentative plan that we'll continue to use these vans in the interim of, or as mitigation to continue to solve our transportation measures moving from year to year? Or is there, you know, you plan to, I don't know, is the plan to continuously use them until we reach a more permanent solution?
So, good, again, good evening, and thank you for the question. The plan is for us to utilize this alternative transportation option on an ongoing basis. So we are renting the vans currently with the promise that the vans that we purchased this past summer will be in place by the spring of next year, and it will become a permanent option that will help round out our portfolio of options to transport students to school. That's why we've worked with our HR partners to develop the non-CDL driver position, because it gives us a more robust way in which to reach all students' needs, and it also is a career ladder for a bus attendant, let's say, that wants to become a non-CDL driver and ultimately a CDL driver. It gives them promotional opportunities that they can follow. So we didn't want to put that in place and then at some point, take it away. So we're going to maintain that posture.
Okay, so you don't, you don't imagine that the pool or the need for a certain amount of CDL drivers, non-CDL drivers would decrease?
I don't believe so, because we have, you know, at any given time, hundreds of MVP students. We also have special needs students who have very unique routes that could be utilized to free up a traditional school bus. And so there is, there's enough need that I feel confident we would always be able to meet it with the number of non-CDL drivers we have in place.
Okay, thank you. That's my, that's my time.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to also just thank the administration for bringing us this update. And, you know, just sharing with us the progress that we're making here. I have a couple of points here that I'd like to raise. So first, I know that several bus drivers have reached out and just stated that they haven't received their retro pay from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. When will those affected by that be compensated? If you can just give a brief answer, so I want to standard the two minutes.
So the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Yes, there were bus drivers that were supposed to receive retro pay from that time period. Apparently, they're receiving it in increments. So like seventeen dollars here, twenty dollars there, you know, and that is, you know, as we know, that's not very useful or helpful. When, when can they expect to receive their full payment, or are we paying them in increments? Kind of what's the status of that?
I would need to.
No, I was going to say, we'll have to follow up with that, because at this moment, I'm not familiar with a merchant payment for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Another thing, I'm really happy to hear that you all are starting your regular meetings with local twenty-two fifty and keeping that communication open. Are they going to be consulted with the audit, with formative?
Well, that is the idea with this ongoing committee meeting that we're establishing, that we're ahead of the curve and letting them know these things, and we can, and the audit will be part of what we talk about in there.
Okay, great. I, one thing I'd like to happen in the audit is I would really love if I would like for the school system to include in the audit sort of some empathy work around the informal transportation systems that happen in many communities already. So I'm not sure if you all are aware, but like I know in several communities in my district, families have created their own bus system using vans. And I think that we don't need to crack down on this necessarily. I mean, I'm not going to say here or there. I mean, people are trying to get to work. They have to get to work. But my, my question here is, what can we learn from these communities? What are they doing that we could, you know, we don't need to take a stance of, you know, shunning that, but more so trying to gather information. So I'm asking if that can be part of the audit, that we do some research and empathy work around that. Additionally, and then I see your hand, on board member Rivera, Rivera Forbes. You know, I think along the lines of communication, we, it would be great, I'd like to see if the administration could put forward a a comprehensive memo in email to the community, just stating that what you've done. You know, you've had these fairs, you know, you're having two per month. You've extended this many offers where, you know, what percentage are we closer to filling these gaps? Just putting this in a, like a user-friendly way that people can, can access and understand. So, you know, I want to put a motion on the floor that the, the administration puts together a public-facing update memo on transportation that will provide information on hires, our contracted services, you know, our CDL programs, a comprehensive transportation memo to the public. And so, you know, I'd also like to add to that motion that we ask the administration to to study some of the informal transportation networks that exist in our communities.
I second both motions.
So it's been moved and seconded.
One motion or two?
Yeah, yeah. Want to clarification, you got to separate into two, Chair.
Sure, sure. So the first motion is that the board, that the administration puts forward a memo to the community with a transportation update detailing a lot of this information in a community-friendly manners that people can be updated on what's happening.
That's the second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, I'm seeing none.
Hands up, wait.
I didn't, I don't think that this is for this piece, but I will go to Ms. Rivera Forbes. Her hand was up prior to, prior to me speaking, but I do want to give her her full two and a half minutes. So unless, Ms. Rivera Forbes, did you have something to say on this particular topic, or do you want to wait for your two, two minutes?
I have a question about presentation.
Okay, okay. Well, then, let's, if we can get through these two motions, and then I'll give you, go back to you for your full two and a half minutes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. The second, I, the second motion, I moved that the administration does some empathy investigative work in communities to learn more about micro-transit that already exists in our community and try to learn from those communities within the audit. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, I turned myself off. Wouldn't that automatically be discussed with the, it's supposed to be a full audit of the transportation system? Would that not be a part of that research that the audit folks would do? Anybody?
Yeah, may I answer?
Go ahead, remember that.
Remember Route, Route.
No, 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 no. Can I, can I please answer your question? The, the Prince George's County Public School System would never know about these informal things, because they, they are they, they are informal. So the schools may or may not know that they're but it's just like any other aftercare program. So the district would not be made aware formally. So there needs to be some investigative work happening.
Okay, so let me hear from the administration, please. So for those of you that are representing the administration, what I hear the board members saying is that we have no insight into any of that?
So I appreciate that, Board Chairman Mickens Murray. So I am just, I'm trying to process through the request or the proposed motion. What I know is Formative, which is the third-party consulting group that is conducting the independent audit, has identified with our input different focus group areas to make certain that the audit is comprehensive. That includes our human resources partners, that includes our bus lot staff, that includes drivers, that includes our parent community, and so that includes students. And so they are, we are in the latter stages of the data collection, both on the quantitative side and as far as the qualitative focus groups. I'm hearing about the informal And as far as the qualitative focus groups, um, I'm hearing about the informal network. I'm wondering if that wouldn't come up as a part of the student, uh, focus groups, as a part of the parent focus group that was held. And if not, I'm wondering where they should, uh, uh. Reach out in order to gather this information, giving the timeframe. Uh, the aggressive timeframe that they have to do the data collection and then turn around recommendations, uh, uh, by the end of December.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, and I can answer that. So. I think that there are communities of families that might be going under the radar. They may not come up in some of those groups that you mentioned, which that, that listing is pretty comprehensive. Um, but, for example, for many of our communities, our, our migrant and immigrant communities, um. We may not be touching them, we may not be adequately touching them with this. And, and I do, I don't want to say that as though something is wrong with the audit. I think the audit is great, and I'm really happy that you all are doing it. I'm just trying to give you all a culturally responsive, um. Suggestion, um, because it's very pervasive, and I think that it, it's something that I haven't heard us talk about much. But I think there's a lot of learning that can happen from it. And that's, that's my only goal here is to connect you. And I know that Board Member Ralph is very familiar with these, um, informal networks. Not to say these are bad or anything, these are just ways that communities are coming together, and I just think that there's some great learning opportunities that can happen there. Dr. Coleman?
Yeah, definitely appreciate that. I think what would be helpful is, um, if you all are familiar with some. Representative points of contact, uh, that we could put in touch with the formative team. Uh, that would help us kind of expedite that work, cause I'm just mindful of the fact that, um, you know, they're, they're wrapping up the interviews. Um, I know we still have to meet with our student information system, I T team. And, and, and kind of start cleaning up the data and then getting the report prepared. Uh, so if we have a point of contact that we can pass along, then perhaps, and recommend them for another focus group.
Absolutely. For member route.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we're in the middle of a motion, and I think that the discussion was definitely germane to the topic. But I just want us to be careful with our use of Robert's rules, um, because we should be. We should be voting this motion up or down.
Okay, thank you so much. And Dr. Harris?
Yeah, I'm just one, one additional thing, um, and I think Dr. Coleman said it already. My recommendation would be. Instead of having administration kind of go out and try to pick through which community is doing these informal networks. It might be better if we create a vehicle so that these informal networks can then contact or engage with them in some manner. I mean, I know we had the, the, the parent work group as well, um, but I'm just thinking from the perspective of resources, time, allocation of money. Allocation of resource in general, um, it might, it might, um, be a bit of a burden to do that. So I was thinking flipping it to have them reach out to, not reach out to us, but work both ends to the middle, for lack of a better term.
Um, so I mean, what I'll say is this, let's vote on the motion, and then Board Member Route, can you be a connector here and connect? The administration with some of these different groups in our community?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and I think that can meet with Dr. Harrison and, um, Board Member and Chairman McInnes Murray are concerned with. All right, um, so I'm gonna, uh. Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, um, so I, I move for the administration to. Um, incorporate some empathy or work or some, to incorporate some. Empathy interviews within the audit with some of our informal trans, micro transit networks happening in communities. Um, and re- report back to the O B A F A Committee. Um, so it's, it's been moved and seconded, um, all in favor?
I, I support.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, all right, thank you, the, and abstain? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, um, Board Member Rivera Forbes, if you'd like to speak now, please, please feel free. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I also wanted to say thank you for that presentation. It was very, very informative. My first question about the vans are, will they have cameras on them just for student and driver safety?
Yes, they are equipped with cameras.
Okay, and my next question is, because you did say they would be a bit versatile for smaller students, like students. I guess you would say kindergarten, pre K, will there be an assist, assistant on those vans for them?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Right, it, it would be, you know, or case by case. Um, and that's moving if, if the student had special needs, and that standpoint, we would work to accommodate, um, the needs of that student in that manner.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Rivera Forbes, if I can just add to that as well. Um, right now, as we mentioned, we have sixteen vans, but we're allocated to have a total of twenty five individuals in the position. Um, as part of the job description, it does allow them the opportunity to work in the capacity of a, um, transportation attendant. In the event they're not driving. So once we get fully staffed, if there are situations where on a specific, on a specific bus. There's an increased need to have individuals work, we can have the non C D L drivers provide the functions of a transportation attendant to what you referenced.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we're gonna close out this section, and I'm just gonna ask, um, for that one follow up. I know there were several follows, but I just wanted to make sure this was noted, um, um, from Ms. Harmon, for us to have a follow up on the back pay. From the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. For, uh, Mr. Eugene.
Yes.
For, for our next O B A F A meeting.
And may I ask if you, do you happen to know employees' names that you can provide for us, so we can actually start to track that?
I, I know, I don't know that I can share that, but I, yeah, I can. Yes, yes, I can re, um, reach out to Dr. Coleman and Dr. House regarding the, 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 um, emails I've received regarding this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We have one, uh, final question I just thought of. Do we have cameras on all buses that transport our disabled students?
Yes, we do, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move along now to item three point two C I P updates and next steps. I'm going to le, yield the floor now to our Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Um, Trasker Coleman, um, to provide an update on phase two. Of the P three budget project with a potential budget for shortfall. For the upcoming school year in the addition of two new schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, good evening, Board Chair, uh, uh. Board Committee Chair Adam Stafford and members of the board. At this time, we're gonna turn it over to our, uh, uh, Associate Superintendent. For Supporting Services, Mr. Jason Washington, to provide this presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I will, let me share my screen here for the presentation. Um, let me know if you can see it. Okay, see it. Perfect. So now let me move it here. So, um. Yeah, I guess first, let me, uh. Is to kind of give an overview of, of what, um. What the, I guess, the statutory requirements are for phase two, uh. Um, basically, this came about through the Bill to Learn Act and three subsequent amendments, uh, to the act. Uh, just in terms of, uh, of what we were required to do, uh, to receive state money. Um, per the latest, uh, legislation, uh, approved, uh, this past spring. Uh, the, uh, legislature required, uh, P G C P S to add two additional schools. For, uh, mandating a minimum of eight schools that are required to be built as part of phase two. Uh, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, they have final approval. On any contract that we agree to with the developer. Uh, and Maryland Stadium Authority has review rights of that document. Uh, we comply with all of that. And enter into a four-party memorandum of understanding, uh, between Maryland Stadium Authority, Interagency Commission on School Construction. The county, P G C P S, we will then, uh, receive, um, twenty five million dollar upfront payment from the state. Um, as well as a twenty seven million dollar annual payment, uh, from the state, uh, for the next thirty years. Uh, prior to this latest amendment, uh, we did not receive, uh, the twenty five million dollar one-time payment. And the state's contribution was twenty five million dollars a year. Um, and I will, uh, highlight that, uh, further in just a moment. Uh, the total amount of state contribution for, uh, phase two is, uh, a hu- eight hundred and ten million dollars. The state also, in the latest amendment to the statute, statute, did not extend the drop dead date. Uh, therefore, if we do not enter into a deal, uh, with the selected developer by June thirtieth. We forfeit, uh, the state's contribution. And so that is why we are hard at work, uh, trying to, uh, put this program together. Uh, it calls for the developer to do a lot. They're gonna have to price out this program, uh, very early. On, in the process to make sure we could go through all of the, the financial steps, uh, and the pricing of the deal. All with a focus on making sure that we stay of, of, uh, below affordability, which is sixty four million dollars. And so, to highlight for everybody how this is different than phase one. Uh, phase one was a total county-funded project, fifteen million from the county. Uh, the subsequent balance, uh, from P G C P S on the capital dollar side. Uh, and our affordability limit, uh, at the time, we set at thirty two million dollars. Uh, our initial close and financial close, uh, in December of twenty twenty, uh, was twenty eight point five. Uh, once, uh, the books close, we will, uh, there were some, uh, no land conditions cost and delay cost. Uh, with Colin Powell specifically, uh, that, uh, will be, uh, updated and, and changed. And will be refinanced, uh, to ensure where we come out under that, uh, funding affordability limit. Uh, but that's, uh, basically the, the limit that we set, just based upon our initial projections. There is a, uh, a cost of living or more appropriately a C D I linked index for the services period. Uh, that we handle, uh, is two and a half percent per year. Uh, and therefore, the states, I mean, or the county's contribution is static at fifteen million. Hours were incrementally increased by two point five percent, uh, as we proceed. Uh, again, that, uh, was on the capital side. Uh, uh, capital programs and Director Matlock had allocated and segregated out that money. Uh, and it's really a, a budgeting tool for us, uh, through phase one, because we know. What the outstanding and out-year obligations are, they're able to carve that out of the C I P. And dedicate funds to, uh, other, uh, projects. Phase two, and there is no state money. Phase two is different. There are three contributors to, uh, the, uh. To, to the, to the affordability limit. Uh, the affordability limit is set at sixty four million dollars. Uh, that is inclusive of a P L A, that is inclusive of, uh, prevailing wage. That is inclusive of everything that, uh, the, the fees and everything else. That the developer has, uh, to put together this deal. Um, and, uh, the. The biggest change is the state, well, no, not the state, the county is requiring the, the, uh. P G C P S's contribution to come out of the operating budget. So going forward, this is our contribution, uh, has to come out of the operating budget, uh, going forward. Uh, that is a change, uh, we've, uh, tried to address that. Uh, because we feel that the capital budget is, is better suited, just from a, a, a standpoint of the required amount. Uh, the, uh, school system's contribution, um, and, uh, that discussion has went nowhere with O and B. Uh, to, to date, uh, but, but that is, uh, the, the, the plan right now, and that's the requirement that we have. Um, part of also, uh, working with the state now, uh, requires P G C P S and Prince George's County. To pay our, uh, respective contributions into a state fund. There's a state fund that will be established by the I A C. Uh, this fiscal year, uh, to hold all of the funds. Uh, so basically, we will pay the state for the state to pay us our own money back a month later. Uh, that's how the system is set up, that's set up in a way to ensure that both Prince George's County Public Schools. As well as the county contributes our match, uh, and this is their way to verify. That we have provided a match, uh, for the, uh, uh, the, the, the state funds, uh, each year. Uh, the only requirement to receive the state money after we end up in, after we close the deal, is to. Continue to have a executed agreement in place. That's, that, that's, uh, really it. Um, and as long as we can verify that they are still in agreement, we are, uh, uh, entitled to twenty seven million dollars a year of state money. So what this looks like, and this is really to, to kind of, uh, put, uh, a, a fine tooth. Uh, or, or a, a laser on this, is we started this procurement, uh, two years ago, uh, with six schools. Uh, we started it, and you can see the contributions that had been, uh, allocated. And we had solved for affordability, uh, before the additional eight school, before the additional two schools at fifty million per year. Uh, we had, I felt great, because we had literally solved for it, and a week later, they changed, uh, the, the school allocation. Um, as you can see, when we went to eight schools, uh, the, the school system. Uh, I guess pro rata share of the match, uh, increased, uh, significantly more. Uh, than the state's contribution and the county's contribution. Uh, and, uh, it's been made clear in our M O U discussions that, uh. They are very adamant that though, that their contributions, which we appreciate and are glad we have, are, uh, maximums. Therefore, if there is any overage above the affordability limit. Uh, that is also going to be a requirement of P G C P S, uh, to fund. Out of operating dollars. Um, and, uh, the biggest thing that we're focused on now, to be as blunt as possible, are interest rates. Uh, and having two wars, uh, having, uh, inflation and everything else, uh, is, is causing the developers to sweat. Uh, they're gonna work hard and we're gonna figure it out, but those are, uh, big challenges that we're working through right now. Uh, to, to give you a sense of how the market has went, uh, their proposal, uh, which was under affordability. Uh, was, uh, based upon a, uh, interest rate, uh, that is no longer in play. The interest rates went up a hundred basis points in two months. And so, uh, they are, uh, they have come down, uh, thankfully, because inflation has slowed down. Uh, but, uh, there's still more work to do. Um, and the best way to, to address that is to have a definitive program. Uh, and to run a rigorous funding competition, which is what they're gonna do. Uh, the county's, um, bond rating, uh, is helpful, and also the fact that we have done this before. Um, and, uh, that is, uh, all things working in our favor. See if there's any. And so, so really, that was, I just wanted to make sure that we shared, uh, what we are, uh, focused on right now. Um, our goal, be as honest as possible, is getting this program affordable, under sixty four million dollars. That's our focus, that's what we're, uh, uh, working towards with the developer. Uh, we have, uh, looked at, uh, different, um, approaches, uh, to, uh, the design. We're looking at various partnerships, we're looking at, uh, other, uh, grant opportunities, uh, to, uh, take some of the, uh, uh. Cost off of the project, uh, but i- it's gonna be tight. And, uh, I wanna be as honest as possible, and we are, you know, w- we're gonna get it done, uh, but it's, it's going to, uh. Uh, re- require a, a lot, uh, from the team, um, and, uh, I just wanted to make sure everyone here. Uh, understood, uh, the, the dynamics, uh, that we're, that we're playing with. Uh, and that, uh, we're working through as we develop, uh, phase two. So, and I will open it up for if there are any questions. So and I will open it up for if there are any questions or 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 anything else for me.
Okay, thank you so much. I have two quick questions here before I go to my colleagues. You know, I'm trying to understand why, fir- first of all, why was the requirement moved from the capital budget? And I, and I'm.
Good question.
It was the board, was the board, I know that there are meetings between the. Well, the then CEO, the county executive and the board chair. There's there are frequent meetings about the status of the project, but when when was this transition made?
This was a requirement from O and B. On because, so it it makes sense in theory. Because remember, capital dollars are bonded dollars or debt. So theory is, is that it's not good fiscal practice to pay debt with debt. And that that's that's the, you know, that that's really the baseline of the conversation. Capital dollars are bonded money. That they've went out and raised to pay for for fiscal year projects. Fiscal year capital projects, et cetera. And the county has a bond limit that they can go out and they can't go above it. The operating side are tax receipts, are revenue generated from residents. And so it's it's cash, for lack of a better term, and not credit. And so so that's what the distinction is. We understand that we understand that distinction, however. We, you know, thi- this is. And and Chief Howell has has asked me repeatedly if if she heard me correctly. Because thi- this is, you know, a significant impact on the programs that we want to do. For the 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 school system. And that's why it's imperative that we know our max and we do everything we can to stay within that. And but but that's that's the that's the justification. It was not, it was. To be fair, the previous CEO made it clear that she was not in agreement with that. And we, it was told to us that that this is the condition for receiving the the county funds.
And I guess who made that decision? I mean, who made the decision that this had to? Because I guess we had a successful Phase One of the program. And then to change it so drastically, it's almost as if they're penalizing us for our success. We had a successful, you know, Phase One. So then not only are we being required to build more schools, which we need more schools. But now we are having to pay for this out of our operating budget and that is going to significantly impact. A lot of the programs that we have for the our students, like. After school programs, summer programs, tutoring, all of those things are going to be significantly impacted. And so, you know, I as a board member, I feel like, you know, the board and the community really should have. Been able to, or I think that we should still should reach out to O and B to try to negotiate this. Because my second question actually is, you know, what is the interest rate when we turn this money over to the state? You know, we have to turn the money over to the state so then we can then get the money back in order to build the schools. So, you know, that's another, you know, sort of hurdle that was not there in Phase One.
It was, yeah, you're correct. So so.
What what is the interest rate?
Well, well, the the.
The rate of return.
Yeah, the the states will say that they are just holding it in escrow for us. We we have access to it and we can pull it down and put it in. It it just creates unnecessary transactional time and and transactional cost is what what I would would argue. And we have a model that works. That fell on deaf ears. We we've been and Dr. Coleman and others from our team know it. It's been my ongoing update is that we're negotiating our MOU. And these have been part of those discussions thus far. The 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 plan, this, the decision was through O and B. As communicated as from the administration. So I I would would say that while we heard from the O and B, that's that's the administration's position. And that that's 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 what we've been told to date. And and we under, we, look, I'll be honest, we, I totally understand it, but also to your point, we had. Predicated our approach to Phase Two when we first started based on capital budget. So I I so we made that change. We started the planning of this thinking that it was gonna be capital budget. But we we have since adjusted. But you're, everyone is correct. This will have significant impact on. The the, you know, potential programs and other things that we can do out of the operating budget.
Thank you so much, colleagues. I think we're, I feel like we're getting a bad deal here. We were successful in Phase One. We built these schools in two and a half years. We now have to take money out of our operating budget. And I'd like to know what other jurisdictions are having to do something like this. This is a significant hit to our operating budget. Mind you, we also are getting funding from Blueprint. And mind you, we're also hitting a fiscal cliff with the ARP funds. That are running out this year. And then to also then have this, this is just really, it's it's really unfair. And then having to have the additional hurdle of turning this money over to a fund, and I'm not hearing that that fund. Is providing us with a rate of return. I mean, if it's a fund, then we should be getting some money back, right? It should be eight to twelve percent, right? So my, I I am probably, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor after everyone speaks. But I think that the board needs to meet with O and B to find out, you know, why we are being subjected to. These types of hurdles, honestly. Because we should, if anything, we should be, they should be clearing the way for us to continue to do this work because we had a successful Phase One. I'm gonna go to Chair Mickens Murray and then Board Member Rout, and then if there are any other hands up.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. My first question is, because I always look at history. With our operating budget, and if you can't answer this tonight, maybe someone can get back to me with it. How much money have we given back through, let's say, the last four years from our operating budget? So I don't know if you have that number tonight, but.
Can you clarify what you mean when you say how much money have we given back?
Well, that we did not use. See, a lot of times when we don't use our entire budget. Then the powers to be who oversee those budgets. And they they start to think that you don't need the money. And if you do that over a few years, then you start to make the case that you don't need the money. So what I'm interested in it in is knowing how much money has the Prince George's County Public Schools. Given that, I mean, not given back, did not use. And and I realize we had the pandemic and all of that. So when you provide that information to me, you can come, I mean, the board, you can qualify the circumstances. Do you understand now, Ms. Howell?
Yes, I do understand. I mean, I think generally speaking, throughout the years, you know, we go through and we prepare a financial review periodically throughout the years. When we do have savings in certain categories, whether it's delayed projects or whether it's salary laps. We reallocate those funds to other priorities. So you think about the twenty twenty four budget that we passed earlier last year. We prepaid some expenses that were initially planned for twenty four in twenty three because we had savings. And that was how we were able to close part of our budget gap in twenty four. So we are very proactive in trying to utilize any savings that does come out of our budget. To see where we can kind of use those funds to help cover other initiatives, because your budget is only good as what you know about the, is a snapshot as of a point in time. So different efforts and initiatives come up during the year that you didn't plan for, that you might find out of your savings that might happen because of. Delayed projects or salary laps. But we also use it as a budget measure to close a budget gap when you're planning for your budget for the coming year. And we're doing that same exercise for twenty twenty five as we're looking to see. Where we might have savings in twenty four, can we utilize that to prepay for items that really need to be in the twenty five budget? Because we know we're gonna be faced with challenges as Jason Washington just outlined.
Right, so the only thing that I will say to that is maybe as you guys are are strategizing how we. Use our budgeting for dollars over the next year. You might, well, I I need to respect that two and a half minutes. I learned that in the retreat. So I will come back in the second round. Thank you. For Member Rout.
Hi, thank you so much for this shocking news today. But I wanted to ask. When did we know the fine print? It sounds like this may have been. This information may have been shed light on our previous CEO. And I I just want to know the timeline of events. Thank you.
Yes, so we started this procurement, I want to say, or the development of procurement. In early twenty twenty two, the development. And so what happens is we retain couns- retain counsel, financial advisors, et cetera. And the financial advisors, JLL, who we had before, they ran what is known as the value for money analysis. Based on the cost of construction, based on a whole lot of different factors. And based on six schools at the time, we ran a model of what our affordability was. And the county was part of that discussion. The state was part of that discussion as well. And all of this was continually shared because we had a work group with council representatives. County executive representatives and school system representatives. We had a, we had a task force. And we were going through this multiple rounds. And then we added Maryland Stadium Authority and the IAC as well. And so we went through a few iterations of that. When the legislation changed to eight, and we were told that, you know, it would be. Out of the operating dollars. The previous CEO made it clear that we were not in favor of that decision. And there was no granting of that decision. It was basically. The money that is received by the county or from the county, that's, it has to be out of operating dollars. It was, so it was, it was not a negotiation. It was not a, let's see what we can do. It was, we don't believe it's good fiscal policy to use capital dollars going forward. And it needs to shift to the operating budget. We continue to continue to push that we needed to revisit this. Especially when we saw the significant additional cost that those schools would 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 take. And so it was the back and forth of all of that. And we, to be clear, that's, we still don't have an MOU sign, which explicitly lays all of this stuff out. And so that's what we're negotiating now. That's what ties in the contribution limits. And that that's what really sets everybody's rights and responsibilities for Phase Two. We have not finalized that between the parties. We need to. But so this not, this is not permanent yet. That's where we are today. So there, and MOU will come before the board and it will come before the council for both parties to approve. And so so that's where we stand right now. So there was no, okay, this is what we're gonna do. It's, that's, those have been the discussions to date.
All right.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have one more, I have one more thing. I just wanted to know, is there any negotiations about the fund? And how much, how much return that we would be able to get? Can we shop around or is it just the state fund?
This is state fund as put in by the statute. So so what has, through negotiations, the state has agreed. That we can pull down all of the money each fiscal year, et cetera. So so it's just, we just felt it made very little process sense for us to send money up. For you to send it right back down to us. And, you know, so, you know, it's fine, but, you know, you you lose thirty days. You know, so it's all of that, that fact, that process. And I felt like there were other ways for us to certify that we were in compliance, but that was what was chosen. And so so we we have no, it's it's fine. We have no problem with that. It's just a process. We just want to make sure that when we get the money, we're able to put it in a interest. Bearing account so that we can take advantage of having that money in in escrow.
Okay, Dr. Harris.
Yeah, thank you for the time. So I hear what you're saying, Mr. Watson, when you say that. The bond rating is going to be negatively impacted if we have a deficit in reserves and this that ultimately impacts programs. And so I hear what you're saying about we're currently in negotiations. I guess my 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 question, I don't know if it's rhetorical, but my question for this is. What what, through the financial model, through our upcoming proposed budget, do we know? The gravity of which programs are impacted due to this decision, right? Do we have models for that that we are using in the negotiations to say, because of these decisions, X, Y, Z is impacted? Because of everything that Chair Adam Stafford was saying in terms of S or funding and everything else. What is thus impacted due to this decision? Is that being used as as leverage in these negotiations, for example? And then I know there's a motion on the floor, but you know, how also, it, how can the board help in terms of, I know we want to go and meet with them. But if the negotiation is happening, how additionally can we help in that regard?
So so there are no ongoing negotiations yet, simply because where we stand right now is. This is as much as we're gonna give you, like that, that. So so it's not a negotiation that way. However, internally, and this is prescient because we're gonna be meeting with Chief Howell. To to talk further about this this week and and around. How, you know, we we look at this and its impact on out, so it's not just fiscal twenty five, it's out your budgets. We're talking about thirty years. So so and and if we're having to also handle any escalation that's put into that. You know, twenty seven million is just the start. And so, you know, and and that, those are all of the the factors that we need to to look at. I would say how to help would be literally. We want to do this. We we have been successful in doing it and we are going to do it. But, you know, don't tie our hands as many ways as you can to keep us, you know, from from being, from from making it. As painless as possible. Like, it's gonna be painful, I'll be clear. But, you know, every step of the way should not be a a a a difficult stretch. So, you know, and and so that that's really, you know, what what we would encourage is is the fact that. Making it clear, and we will have a clear understanding of its impact. I I think, look, let's just say, this is thirty million dollars. Let's just put a number out there. That that can impact a whole lot on the operating side. Not that it couldn't also impact stuff on the capital side, but, you know, that 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 is something that is is felt. And when you look at the prorata share, it would be different if everybody was going up the same percentage. Everybody is not. And that that's my worry is that. You know, it's just, it just falls on us to 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 do this. And, you know, I I have thoughts on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we need to move on. And I want to make a motion. So I move that the Board of Education, I move that our board. Reach out to O and B for a meeting to discuss the. Really, really what feels like are some of the obstacles that are being put in front of us as a school system. In order to enact Phase Two of our ACF plan. And the the goal of this meeting is to, you know, get an an understanding of the root cause as to why these changes have occurred. But also to try to negotiate maybe a tiered transition from capital to operating. I mean, I think it's unreasonable for us to think that they can just, we can just take sixty four million dollars out of an operating budget. In one fell swoop in one year. You know, what is more reasonable would be for over the course of maybe ten years. You know, every year, it it's, it it decreases by a percentage. And so being able to negotiate that and we need to be able to articulate, because I know this is already gonna impact, summer school is gonna impact tutoring. You know, these are programs our students desperately need, especially now that COVID funding is running out. So I move that we as a board have a meeting with O and B. To advocate, to alter these changes that have been placed on our Phase Two. So that's my first motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My first question is, understanding that we have two schools which I see as an unfunded mandate. Second, do we have the authority to negotiate with O M B? Or is, as a school system and a board? Or is that at a higher level in this county?
Well, that's, that's gonna be my second motion is that we convene a meeting with the delegation. That's, that's, look, I'm gonna answer the, the authority does lie within us. We are the people that are signing the contract. We are the Board of Education and this is our fiscal responsibility over the operating budget. Absolutely in our wheelhouse. And I think that we have to advocate, this is a moment of advocacy. So, you know, no one else is going to advocate for us.
Let me ask it differently. I've never seen O M B at a table that I've ever sat at. So at what table did that negotiation take place? Anybody from the administration?
I believe that O M B is going to play a heavy part in advising the county executive and what needs to occur in terms of this overall process. So it's not just a unilateral decision by O M B, but I'm certain that there's been conversations with the county executive, the county council as it relates to the decisions around this and other aspects of the county's budget that will impact our operating budget as well.
Okay, so Ms. Howell, my question is this. Does the, can the board go directly to O M B? Or do we need to go through the county council and the county exec's office to get to O M B? I, I just want to know what that line is.
I would think that's probably a question you might want to clarify with the county council in terms of exactly what that might need to look like. From the finance perspective, O M B, they are the ones that help to support the fiscal management of the county budget.
The county.
And so.
Okay.
They're the ones who are going to be advising the county executive in terms of what this needs to look like.
Okay, I, I think I understand that now. So my, my suggestion is that this board might want to start working with the, the people in Annapolis to ensure that we get additional funds for those two schools that I see as an underfunded mandate. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on this motion?
Yes, my hammer's raised. It's on the motion. Colleagues, I speak in favor. We don't want to box ourselves in any type of, we, we don't want to limit ourselves to the advocacy work that we can be doing with our partners. And so as the district has presented to us who our partners are, there is the state delegation, there, it is the county. And I, I think this is a path forward so that we can be able to not only understand more about maybe creatively, innovatively thinking about how we will fund this, but making sure that there's not a learning loss and/or our programs taking a hit. So I speak in favor of this motion. And it, you know, just in a brief discussion, I, I also will support a similar motion speaking to the educational committees within our state delegation, I yield.
Thank you. Is there any, if there's no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Ms., Ms. Mickens-Murray was on mute. Ms. Adams.
I oppose.
Okay, so let's call the roll.
So, sorry, can I say, sorry.
Sure, sure, I'm sorry, I can't see your hand.
Yeah, logistically, and this might help, Ms. Mickens-Murray, if, in terms of her vote, would this, and this is a question for Chair Adam Stafford, would this come out of the committee as a recommendation that the board moves forward with advocacy toward the higher powers to reach a resolution or update MOU for the purposes of improving our stance on this? I think, I think, so I, I don't know if I reword the motion to say the ABFA committee is going to recommend that we do advocacy work to achieve XYZ as opposed to we, the board, will approach O M B with the request of XYZ.
And that's my concern to restate the motion then. If the motion is not to go straight to O M B, because that's the problem I have. So I would, I would suggest that someone restate the motion.
Hi, point of order. Are we, are we all gonna go back and forth and say our piece? Or are we going to, you know, raise our hands? Are we, what, what are we doing here?
So, you know, the motion is for our board, there's nothing wrong with us as a board sending a letter to O M B asking clarifying questions. I mean, this is the one job of the Board of Education is to have fiscal oversight over the operating budget and the capital budget. And so we're asking a question, like why we're about to take a $64 million hit? And I think that we can ask that question. And in a separate motion, we can convene a meeting with the county leadership to explain to them how this is going to impact us and ask them to take collective action to advocate to O M B to at least give us a, a staggered time. But I mean, I could see if like we didn't complete phase one and it was a terrible failure. I mean, it was an incredible international success. So why are we now being penalized in this way? So I feel like we have to take a stand and say, you know, there has to be some type of commu, at least a communication. We haven't even received any communication on this until now. So the first motion is for us as a board to write a letter to O M B to ask for some clarifying questions. And then the next, the next phase is for us to then meet with our county leadership to, to advocate on behalf of, you know, our residents and why this is going to be proposed, some challenges for our students in our county. You can go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Harris has his hand, Dr. Harris has his.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Harris.
So that's, that's, that's what I'm asking, or that's what I'm, I'm trying to. My recommendation is, again, that you, you kind of cast a wider net because just like administration just said, we don't know if O, O M B is going to engage with us. If you say, let's write a letter to O M B and they don't respond, or they say, we're not talking to you, then there was no point in the motion. Now, if you have a larger recommendation that says we are going to work with whomever it is to advocate for the goals that we want, now that's a wider net that the, the board can continuously to work at until we get a result. I, I don't know if O M B is going to respond. That, that's just me trying to be proactive and whatever happens next.
I mean, to me, they can respond, they don't have to respond. They can, they don't have to respond. I mean, we have to take, that's, that's part of our work as elected leaders is to have advocacy. I mean, people write letters to people all the time, nobody was. So I mean, hey, we can write a letter. And I think there's a yes and here. I mean, us writing a letter shows that, you know, we collectively find a, have a problem with this. And I don't think that it's outside of our purview to write a letter asking for clarification.
I'm not saying to not do anything. I'm not saying to not do it.
So you're saying to, okay, I'm gonna go to Board Member Route and then we'll, we'll reconvene here.
Yeah, we're, we, I, 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 I respect the healthy discussion, but we, we are in the middle of a motion. I wish we had our parliamentarian here. He would have kept us together. We're, we're just in the middle of a motion, so if, I just want to request if we could call the roll.
Is there, is there any other discussion?
I have one final comment. I think it behooves us to work with our county council and our county exec before we go directly to the, to O M B. I think we do things in order and that for me is in order. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm willing to amend the motion so that we can have, so that we can have unanimous support on this. So Chair Mickens-Murray, what, what would you like the motion to say? So that would include communicating with our, our other county leaders?
That would be the motion, that we communicate either through a, a meeting or a letter to our county leaders that we would like to have, that we would like to collectively have them join us in addressing O M B that the dollars for this new construction should not come out of our operating budget.
Okay, I, I accept that change. So I'm going to alter the motion and I don't have, we don't have parliamentarian here, but I accept the amendment to this motion. So I move that we work, I move that we communicate with our county council and delegation leadership to work with us on a letter or communication to O M B to understand some of the changes that have been put in place for the phase two construction. So that, that is a new motion.
So I seconded the old motion and I am okay with this new motion as an amended motion. So here's my second for this one.
So now we're putting on the amended motion.
Yes. Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
All right, the motion carries. Okay, so let's, okay, sorry.
Um, is it, was there another motion? Or should I make it point of information? There was, um, talk about another motion to similar with the delegation.
No, I just combined it into one. So, no, there's no other motion. All right. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, so we're now moving to item 3.3, our budget moment. Want to turn it over to Chief Lisa Howell, our financial, Chief Financial Officer, to provide any updates and information on the budget amendment process.
Thank you, Committee Chair Adam Stafford. So we reviewed in our last ABFA meeting the amendment process that was being proposed and that was actually presented to the full board this past Thursday. So I will just highlight what was decided upon for the public because it was draft last time we went through it. I'm not going to go through the entire presentation. It is out there on board docs. I guess I can share my own screen here. Just bear with me for a moment. Hope I'm sharing the correct screen. All right, pull up here. All right, are you able to see? Okay, there. All right, are you seeing that? Okay? Feel like I'm sharing the wrong screen. Hold up.
Yes, I see slide four.
Okay. Just bear with me for one moment again here. All right, that's two. All right. So in our last meeting, we have the draft dates here that were being considered, which are highlighted in red and these are now finalized. But we are looking to have, after the CEO or after the superintendent, excuse me, presents the proposed budget on December 7th, there will be a period of time where we have four by four sessions with administration and the board members. Those meetings will take place between December 12th and December 20th. At the ABFA meeting on December 20th, we will review the amendment template, which can be one of the tools that will be used by board members to submit board amendments. Moving on to the work sessions, there will be a total of three work sessions that will be scheduled. The first one remains unchanged, January 25th. The second one has been approved to take place on February 1st. At each of those two work sessions, they will be followed by a public hearing. And then the third work session will actually be held on February 15th. That work session will actually be preceded with a public hearing. So the public hearing will take place first and then the work session will follow after that. And we're doing that change to allow enough time on the front end for the public hearing and, and to be able to then have time on the back end to get through the remainder of the discussions around the amendments that will be decided upon prior to the full board meeting on February 22nd. So the meeting on February 22nd is where the board members will then approve or adopt the requested budget, which will be inclusive of any amendments that are decided upon at the previous third work session on February 15th. Throughout this timeframe, so this just kind of gives an overall view of where there is an opportunity for the community members to continue to be engaged in the process. So again, just in summary, there'll be the two work sessions, the two public hearings, excuse me, on the 25th of January and on February 1st. And then there will be a, a public hearing as well at the February 15th meeting. We will also be engaging with the community members through the development of various communication tools. We're looking to put together some videos that kind of captures the budget process in a brief, short snapshot overview of how the process works. And we're hoping that those will be short videos that can be shared with board members as well, that they can leverage in their different settings and meetings that they're having and engaging with their constituents. So overall, this is the final process that was decided upon at last week's board meeting. Any questions?
First, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Chief Howell, for helping to revise this and to ensure that we have the appropriate amount of community outreach in this budget process. And thank you for working with us to make the budget amendment process a way that board members can participate and have multiple entry points to engage with the budget. I know that one of the goals of our committee this year is to make the budget process more accessible to all stakeholders. And I think that we, we've talked about having some outreach from this, this group to support people in understanding how, how the budget works and sort of their role in the process. And so I just thank you for this recap here. And I think that it'll be really useful for us in terms of engaging on the budget. I had a question. I know that you all have been work, you've been working with the Communications Office to possibly put together a short video. I just wanted to see if you had any update on that.
Not yet. We have a meeting scheduled a little bit later on December to start working on. I know they're on the background, they're working on putting together the theme board, but I think they want to then be able to engage with us to kind of pull in the specifics around that to incorporate it into their overall plan. But they have already started the groundwork for that.
Okay, I, I feel like if we could, if, if possible, if that could happen, be completed, and it doesn't have to be like a comprehensive, like production of a video. It could literally be a, a screencast of the budget, a screen share. But it's just something that we, once December 7th happens and we can start, we're going out into the community, having that just five to seven minute overview of the budget, like in very layman's terms, I think, could be really useful. Because then we could also have it translated into Spanish as well. because then we could also have it translated, um, into Spanish as well.
Yeah, I know that we're targeting to have something, um, I'm thinking before the, um, winter break timeframe or very early in January when we return. But I know, you know, we're gonna get, getting through the, um, superintendent's proposed budget, which is going to be on the December seventh, and then we're gonna kind of engaging um, in full force at that point to really focus on kind of pulling in the contents of that budget into that video.
Got it. I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, board member route?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for calling on me. So I'm a little concerned that members of the community may not even be aware of the budgeting process in our current budget. So I think it's great to host, um, stakeholder engagement sessions so that we can be able to explain where we're going. But a lot of times, to a family member, to a parent, to a grandparent, we may need to educate them on the process of what it takes to even build a budget and why we're even doing that. And I know it sounds like more engagement, but I guarantee you, it'll set the stage to have the display of the current budget, um, more acceptable and more engaging. And so what I would like to offer through a motion today is that the ABFA committee host, um, at least three uh, focus group sessions to educate our community on our budgeting process and to explain our current budget prior to having our budget focus and engagement sessions.
Um, and, um, I second this motion. Okay, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Chair Mickens Murray.
I'm not sure there's time. You said the, the, your motion is for these focus sessions that happen prior to, you have Thanksgiving next week, and then after Thanksgiving, you start your budget sessions on December seventh. So administrations, big up. I'm not sure there's enough time.
And I, I think I want to, um, can I, can I clarify something? Can I appoint information? I think, I think these sessions are board members reaching out to our communities. And I don't, I don't think we need to put a time limit on it. It can just be throughout the budget season. So, um, board member route, would you be amenable to that? Just making it these three sessions that are just educational and input sessions that would happen throughout the budget process?
Yeah, I'm okay with that amendment. I was, yeah, I, yeah, I was trying to wrap my head around how it would, how it would be able to quantify as it relates to the calendar. Um, what I meant to say was like before we start voting, but I'm, I'm, I'm amenable to your friendly amendment. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this?
Dr. Harris has his hand raised.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you. So the, so the amendment is to have each district have three sometime throughout. Okay, can you restate it for me? Please.
It's really hard getting off mute. Um, so my motion is to host at the ABFA committee host at a minimum of three uh, focus groups to educate our stakeholders on the budget process and review our current budget.
And you want to do that throughout budget season? You, because we took the timeline off of it.
Yes, correct. The timeline has been removed. Um, and so that's the motion. So I'm gonna break. And then for, really the purpose, the really, I think that that will work to restate it because that will gradually gauge and pull, and then we can feed into the rest of the calendar. And like, even though, like, we could have, like, northern county, like, middle county, like, south county at least, and then we can, the board members could possibly collaborate, like, that's northern county. Like, there are many ways that we can be able to um, really get this done. But I do hear uh, from fellow parents in the community that the budget process is just too overwhelming. They don't understand it. They, um, it, it's, it's too, it's too long. It's too, and so really pointing them into our calendar and really focusing the, and reviewing what our current budget is and hearing from them about what they would like to see, um, as we are going through the budget process.
Okay, so, thank you. So my follow-up question or follow-up comment would be, so with these sessions that ABFA is hosting, would it be that ABFA is the vehicle and administration is doing the explanation? Because if, because if so, that, that, I mean, it's, it sounds like, it sounds like a work session. Um, but through ABFA, like, it sounds like a, a, a BFA work session, which is fine. I'm just trying to put some language behind what, what we're expecting here. Um, and if it is in the, the small group, I don't, I, I'm just trying to put some language behind what we're, what our expectation is.
Could I answer that? I think when we initially talked about this, this is really for board members to just be liaising and communicating. I mean, I don't think that we're going to be able to, you know, provide like financial analysis. I think the, the goal here is for us to go into our communities and be able to explain, like, this is the difference between the capital budget and the operating budget. And this is the timeline, and these are the types of things that are voted on. And these are, this is how you participate. Like, you can come to a hearing, you can submit written testimony and like, just sharing like, just like some of the bare bones information about, you know, what the budget process is. And so I, I, I don't think that we would ask administration to be present for this. Maybe we can ask them to review, maybe if we put together like a one pager that can be shared at these meetings, but this is really just meant for board members to, you know, connect the community to this, what we do in this committee.
Sorry, my time was up. That's why I didn't respond. I'll wait for a second.
Um, Mr. Morales?
Thank you. Sorry, I, I just, I wanted to add, as, as I'm hearing this conversation, some, what I think is important in context, um, in my role as senior advisor, one of the benefits and things that I love to do is be able to connect with all the different chiefs. So while our chief of comms is not here, what I can speak to, and, and Chief Howe can possibly back this up, um, is that there are ongoing plans to develop communication tools for the community to understand at, at different levels, what is the budget? What does this mean as the process is happening? Um, there will be toolkits prepared and shared with you all as well that you can distribute. So those things are happening. I just wanted to put that out there because as we're thinking about this, um, there are different kinds of tools that we are looking to develop, um, as an administration.
That's great. There any other, um, any other discussion?
You got Judy's hand up and my hand up.
Okay, okay, okay. Chairman Mickens Murray and then Dr. Harris.
Yes, um, this is a great idea. However, we must have the information be created by the administration. I liked your idea when you asked the administration to do a video or something. I like your idea of having a one pager, but the administration needs to put that one pager together. We can take the mon- one pager out to the community focus groups, uh, however you want to do it. But I think the information that we share must be, uh, approved by the administration. Thank you.
Dr. Harris?
Thanks. So if I can extrapolate this a little more, it sounds like we're gonna do three events, going to board member route's suggestion of north, middle, south. Um, in the motion, I heard that ABFA is committing to do it. And if it's just board members, then that assumes that a member of ABFA is at each one of these. Because within this committee, we can't ascribe board members to have an event in their district, right? It could be a recommendation that you have an event and we're willing to put ourselves in that event to make sure it's facilitated well. So I do like, I do like the idea. I do think that, um, administration should have some hand in the creation of whatever's moving forward so that we can have succinct points to speak to. Um, but I just want to make it clear within the motion that we're saying that we, ABFA, are um, availing ourselves to attend these sessions, if not all three, at least one, as representation from the, from the ABFA committee, but we can't ascribe, like, I can't say Vice Chair Walker, you have to have an event in south, in south county. Um, and that, that's all I'm clarifying, but I like the idea. I just, again, I'm trying to get the language around it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, now board member route?
So Dr. Harris, are you requesting that, are, did you want to fine tune the motion?
Um, I think
For clarity?
Yeah, I think you said, I was just adding some detail, but I think, I think you said it. So you said that, um, you're making a motion for ABFA to host three, three work, work sessions within the community, uh, throughout this budget cycle. Um, one's gonna be north, one's gonna be middle, one's gonna be south county. That, that's the es- the essence of the motion.
All right, thank you.
That's it. No more hands up. Chair?
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to item three point four, the internal audit report. Um, as I see here, there is no report. So I'd like to thank you, everyone, for your presentations and engaging and great discussion this evening. Um, our follow-up items from our October twenty twenty, uh, our, October twenty-fifth meeting uh, will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Superintendent House will present the FY twenty twenty-five proposed budget on Thursday, December seventh, to the full board. Um, and the next, um, ABFA committee will be on Wednesday, December twentieth, at five PM. Again, I want to thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is the motion seconded to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Um, thank you, everyone. I appreciate you all being here this evening. And thank you to our community members that have tuned in as well.
And happy Thanksgiving. Bye-bye.
Have a good one.
Happy Thanksgiving.